This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so we're recording. So waiting for Commissioner Hall, I think?
Yeah, she's on her way right now. She was pulling in late, that's why I was pulling up her screen for her.
Oh, she's physically walking in?
She's, yeah, okay. She should be here any minute.
Okay, so just everybody realizes.
Right.
Waiting for Claire, and she's on her way. And for those that are watching, just everybody be aware, we'll start our meeting shortly.
And just do a sound check here while we're waiting, we can at least get that out of the way. Yeah, so Kristy, sound check from you.
Casey for Kristy, can you hear me?
Yep. Okay, Wayne Belmont.
Present.
Okay, Janet.
Yes.
Nicole Fields.
I'm here.
Rebecca Austin.
I'm here.
Commissioner Hunt.
I'm here.
You changed rooms on me. Jerry?
Present.
And Wiley.
Wiley's here.
Okay, great. We'll just wait for Commissioner Hall to get started here.
And just so you know, I'm watching Claire walk through the parking lot right now, moving at a rapid pace. And I don't know that we've ever had a commissioner meeting on Friday at 3:45, this is first.
First time for many things.
Definitely. All right, there she is. Call set up for you in your office. Okay.
All right.
Hello.
Now that I see Commissioner Hall, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is Friday, June 5th, 2020, 3:50 PM, and this is a special meeting notice to discuss Phase 2 of reopening. I have all three commissioners here remotely, so we do have a forum. We already went through and did sound check, and I just heard Commissioner Hall, so we can hear her as well. So first, we're gonna just kind of jump into things. There's kind of three different things we're gonna discuss today, and we have some data to look at as well. But there's the, you know, are we able to apply? Do we think we would get approved? And then do we want to? Those are kind of the three different things to discuss. On Monday, when we had our regular Board of Commissioners meeting room, we were going off of information from the Friday before that we wouldn't qualify. There had been additional information given out by the state this week, as well as several counties that applied, and some that were granted permission to get to Phase 2, and some that were not. In addition to that information, we also have had another outbreak in Lincoln County at a seafood processing plant. So many things have happened between Monday and today. So we just wanted to get additional information, have a discussion as a board, and see what we wanted to do. That's kind of the purpose of today's meeting. I will first kick it off, I believe, with Nicole Fields from Public Health, who had some data she wanted to share with us.
Great, thanks so much. And Kristy, if you could share the screen with me, that would be appreciated. Perfect. I'll give you just the total numbers update. In the state of Oregon, there are 4,570 confirmed cases of COVID-19. In Lincoln County, we got some new cases today. That brings our total to 26 confirmed cases and four presumptive cases, for a total of 30 cases. So that should be updated on the OHA website tomorrow. But we've seen quite a few new cases over the past few days. So I am, let's see, I'm trying to move this "go-to-meeting" thing around so I can see what my charts are here that I've got going on. And I appreciate Susan Traxel for making these for us. This first shot of data is the community acquired versus contact versus outbreak. So this is how people have gotten COVID-19 in our county. As you can see, we've got an EPI curve, kind of showing the trend of our cases lately. And then this is our cumulative cases line here. So you can kind of see day by day where our increase comes. This total here is going to be your contact known versus community acquired per day. So you can see where people are getting it from. The community acquired is the one that we have to be really, really careful about because we don't know where that's coming from. And then this little, I guess we can call this orange, this little orange block here represents our first outbreak. And then this green block here is our second and current outbreak with the specific seafood plant. Does anyone have any questions on this one? And I'll move to the next one.
My guess is your next graph will probably show this. But do we also have a curve that shows increased testing in relation to this data?
We do. That's such a nice segue. So this is going to be the daily test results and cumulative testing totals. So this is just per day. You can see this line right here is showing you how many tests are being done per day. You can see some spikes, like when we did 147 in one day, which was our pilot project with the Trawling Cooperative. And you can see where we are at now, which is kind of an average. We've gotten 76 tests done. I believe that was yesterday. So that kind of helps you get an idea of how many tests are being done per day. And then the testing rate trend, so this is how many tests are being done per day as a trend. And then these are presumptive positives and positives, that you can see the daily new cases listed over here. And then I am going to show you the next graph as well, which is the cumulative case and testing graph. So this one kind of goes hand in hand with the last one. This line here is the testing trend. These are cumulative tests. You can see that line going up and up and up as we've increased testing. And then that is overlaid with the cumulative case total. So you can see that kind of curving up as well. And these curves follow each other really nicely. So you can see that as the testing increased, the positives increased. Any questions on those?
I feel like I will, but not at this time.
Great. I'm gonna share these back with Kristy too, so she'll be able to access them at any point in the meeting if you do want to put the agenda back up.
Great, thank you.
And then I don't have any additional updates. I was kind of just going over the data, and I think I'm gonna throw it to Rebecca to talk a little bit about the Keep Lincoln County Open campaign and what's been going on with that lately.
Yeah, and I think also an update on what's happening with PAC Seafoods and where we are with testing and contact tracing there, I think would be helpful as well.
Sure, this is Rebecca Austin, Health Department Director. And I do believe that the seafood plant is testing all their employees today in Newport. I haven't been able to confirm that yet, but that was what we heard yesterday, and that was the plan. So they actually hired a private contractor out of the Portland area to come and test for them. So we just need to figure out how we're gonna get those results and making sure that we can contact all the people. Because usually labs, when they get people's information, their addresses are not necessarily in a hotel in Newport because they might live in Seattle or who knows where. So we're trying to figure that out. That's a little bit tricky. So we're expecting probably early next week to be getting those positives. And so that brings up, you know, really showing up our contact tracing capabilities because with testing 400 people, we could get a lot of positive cases and then probably several contacts to go along with that. So I think when they did the testing up in Klatsa, they had around 100, I want to say 140 employees at that time because it was much earlier in the season. They probably ramped up considerably too. And they had just under 30, I think, positives. So you can tell kind of where that percentage is for them. So you can imagine applying that percentage to ours, and we're gonna have a lot or potential for it. So we are showing up our contact tracers. We have made a request through our EOC and the Operations Center to contact OHA to help us with some contract tracing for next week and potentially into the following week. Our problem with us right now, and this is why OHA might be a good solution for us, is we really have to train our people. And there's a very complicated database that people have to be able to get into to put the data. So we kind of have two things. One is to actually call the people up and tell them what's going on and what they need to do for isolation. And then the other is to get that data into the database. So we are working hard to get that all in place. And our CD nurses are the ones that would train people to do that. And of course, they're sinking underwater, trying to keep up with the outbreaks that we have right now and the cases that we have. So it's a little tricky, but we're doing the best we can. And we're kind of getting everybody in the Health Department on board so that we can, you know, hopefully get this put in place on Monday the best we can. And then as far as keeping Lincoln County open campaign, that's something that we have dedicated some more money and resources to because we feel like if we don't have that strongly supported throughout the county, that we're going to continue to get more cases as we open things up more. So we have like 100 posters going up to Lincoln City, who's been very supportive of our work, as has everybody really throughout the county. But we just want to get more messaging out and would like to see a lot of our posters in business windows and things like that. So we're working steadily at that as well. And I do think this all goes hand in hand to your discussion today. So if I can answer any questions, just let me know.
Any questions for Rebecca or Nicole, Commissioner Hall? You're on mute.
I'm sorry, I was muted. Not at this time, maybe later.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes, I have a question. Rebecca, clarify the ability of the current contact tracers to handle the caseload. And this is, I guess my concern is that with the dramatic increase in cases, they're swamped. And it's not a criticism of them. It's a reality that with a limited number of contact tracers, they're simply overwhelmed. Is that a fair assessment? You're on mute.
That is a very fair assessment today, yes. So that's a...
Excuse me, go ahead.
So I said that's gonna be our goal for next week, is to make sure that we do have our people ready. I think we're gonna go to paper for right now. That's another county's, that was their solution when I asked them, what did they do about the database? They have their contact tracers, recording everything on paper. And then that paper will be input into Orpheus by those few people that we have that do know how to get around in Orpheus. So that's kind of how we're gonna deal with it. So I think we can get that up and running and get them supported probably at the latest Tuesday or Wednesday next week, which we really need to do, so.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have now.
Okay. Rebecca, I would just like to kind of, I guess, get clarity on something. I mean, in order to get approval for Phase 1, which we are currently in, you know, we had to make sure we had adequate contact tracers to be able to do this job. If we found ourselves in a situation that we now find ourselves in. And so I guess my kind of question is, or where I need clarity is, you know, we said we have those resources and we have those resources. It's just the issue now, just, you know, we're simply actually executing and issues kind of getting information into a database. You know, I guess I'm just concerned that we had these resources to open, and now here we are. And are we still, do we still have enough contact tracers to continue to do what we said we'd be able to do in Phase 1?
Yes, we do. So we didn't lie in our first application. We do have them. But now it's just really implementing those contact tracers. So we have them all lined up, and we're actually moving to get even more lined up because it's the people that we have lined up, and we were very upfront with the state on this. And they understand, and most counties are in the same situation, that we're borrowing from other programs in public health to do the contact tracing. So we're at this point right now, I'm just trying to shore things up so we can have to borrow as little as possible of other staff's time. So we're actually bringing on a couple retired nurses that could help us do this. They don't have any other programs they have to do. So, and a community health worker, bilingual, bicultural, who will also help us. And that's all part of the, you know, bigger plan to move this into a more sustainable phase because we really don't know how long this is gonna last, and we need those people on board. You know, and the other thing is, it's one thing to say you have the people. It's the other thing to have them be able to actually do the work, which we haven't been able to have them do yet because we didn't have enough people for them to even practice on. So now it's like, oh wow, now we have the people, so now we need to get them ready. And I think today it really sunk in that we can't do the database and the contact tracing. We have to choose one. So that's why we decided to go to paper. And I'm sure there'll be issues about that, but that's the best we're gonna be able to do. And I was grateful to talk to other counties that have done a similar workaround. So I think we can make this work. And like I said, at the latest, we'll have, our CD team will be well-supported probably by Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. That kind of answers my question for clarification. I guess with that, I will turn it over to Wayne. We had some questions that are Monday meeting about Phase 2, and if those criteria were looked at on a seven-day period or a 14-day period, as well as, as I said earlier in this meeting, there were several counties that applied for Phase 2, some that made it through and some that did not. And so I'm hoping you can kind of give us an update about that and about kind of the additional information that came out this week in regards to Phase 2.
Sure, and thanks. Yeah, we've gotten a lot more understanding now of what the process entails. And we got that by having some discussions with OHA, as well as seeing how the process of applying for Phase 2 was actually reviewed by OHA and the applications made by other counties. So as you may recall, there were some additional, four additional prerequisites. And when we went into Phase 1, those were actually specific benchmarks that had to be met before you could even apply for Phase 1. Phase 2 is being looked at quite differently. So you still have to meet those four original requirements, the prerequisites. And I'm not gonna go over those in detail, but just for the sake of shortening that particular part of the discussion, we meet those particular requirements right now. But it was this additional criteria and the metrics that we saw around the follow-up for new cases, the successful tracing of cases that came through, and then the increases in positivity that were there that we had to look at. And as we entered into examining this, as you recall, we did not meet all of those criteria. And our understanding was, well, is this gonna be treated like Phase 1, which says if you don't meet them, you can't apply? But what we have since learned at this point is, and I'm actually gonna read this language because this is what OHA finally came out, post their review of other counties' applications, and saying, here's the process. So the Oregon Health Authority analyzed these metrics, the ones that I just talked about, for each county. But they analyzed them holistically, is the term they used, and determined when seemingly significant percentage increases were actually a result of a county having a very small number of cases. So the fact that we had a red X by some of the indicators previously and continue to have now for different indicators does not preclude us from being approved to move into Phase 2. So what they said was, and to talk a little bit about what happened, 26 Oregon counties applied to move into Phase 2, 23 were granted outright. A number of those counties were like us that didn't meet all the criteria. And in fact, one county, Lang County, didn't meet three of the criteria there. But this is what the explanation that OHA gave. So they say, for example, several counties, which would have included Lincoln County, did not technically meet the metric that at least 70% of the new cases must be tracked to an existing known case. What they said was, however, in all of these counties, the number of untracked cases was so small, fewer than five, that OHA deemed them not significant. In addition, one county, Lang County, technically did not meet the metric of having no increase in testing positivity in the last seven days. And actually, Lang County didn't meet three of the metrics. The previous seven days had a positivity rating of 0%, and the last seven had a positivity of 2%, which is still low compared to the national average, which is over 10%. OHA deemed this change insignificant as well. So what we're finding in this process is that, you know, we had been looking at those criteria as specific eligibility eligibility requirements for us to move forward. That's not the case. And so, to answer your questions, so do we have the ability to apply? The answer to that is clearly yes. And in fact, it's very interesting that Dr. Dean Seidlinger, who's a state health officer and state epidemiologist, in response to inquiries from the news media, noted that there were two counties that were eligible. He called them eligible to enter into a second phase, Hutter and Lincoln, but did not apply. And his response to the media, and this is from yesterday, was he also anticipated each would likely be recommended for approval if they didn't have any red flags. So that's, we've now learned how that process will work if Lincoln County were to apply. So I think I can answer both the questions about do we have the ability to apply at this point, yes. Would we get approved based on what we're now understanding is the way they're reviewing this? We could get approved. Now, I put a few sideboards on that, and I hope Rebecca will weigh in on this too. Our situation changed pretty dramatically here in the last few days, and especially with what we have, the two outbreaks that we've had very recently in the county. So obviously, they will look at the statistics at the time we make an application and have the same kind of discussion with us that they've had with other counties. So at the point that we do apply, we don't know what the changes are gonna be. We can probably get that information. OHA has said that they will provide us with that information at a time when we want to make an application, and we can then examine that as we go forward. So that's what we understand right now.
I'm sorry, Wayne, I didn't quite understand when you said they would provide us with information we wanted to apply. What information?
The latest data. I'm sorry, the latest data. Because again, they have periods of time, and as I understand, and I'm gonna defer to Nicole and Rebecca to tell us, I think they measure it from a Wednesday through a Tuesday timeframe in there. So there is seven-day information that they would actually look at and tell us where we stand at the time we make an application.
Commissioner Hall, questions or comments for Wayne? And then after that, we'll jump into a bigger discussion. Nope, you're on mute still.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted now. And I've got to say, you know, for the public, just things that I'm hearing directly or indirectly, this is a lot to absorb. And frankly, for our position, it seems like a lot to absorb, a lot of change very quickly. But that seems to have been the norm since this really blossomed into a full-blown public health emergency a couple of months ago. I don't know, I wanna, I don't, I guess I'm really conflicted. You're telling us that by Tuesday next week, you expect we will have the organizational capacity to do the necessary training. But I guess what we haven't got into...
It's a deposit.
Huh? Pardon me? Okay, you know, the larger question is of, you know, from a public health standpoint, is this the wise thing to do? Is it the practical thing? I mean, I know people, you know, that there's a lot of angst and fear. I think I could sum up the comments I'm hearing, and I wouldn't be surprised if my fellow commissioners are hearing a lot along the same lines. On the one hand, folks say, you open it up anymore, you're gonna kill me. You don't open it up more right now, you're gonna destroy my livelihood and other people's livelihoods. Going back to Commissioner Hunt, what did you say very early on? No good choices, only good decisions? And I guess I'm still struggling to see what the best decision is on this.
Okay, Commissioner Hunt?
Well, I have some concerns. The first case in Lincoln County was identified on March 24th. It took 69 days for the county to have 12 cases over the 69-day period. In the last five days, we've had 18 cases. So one and a half times what it took 69 days to happen has occurred in five days. So that trend to me is very frightening. And I think when you look at the thing that Director Austin has discussed, I think there's reason to be even more concerned about what the next few days or week may see occur and what increases we'll see in cases. You know, I also am very sensitive to the issue that Commissioner Hall identified. We've got a public health crisis, and we've got some economic challenges. But I'd also like to point out that if you look at the aid that has been provided to the businesses, the federal government has provided the Preferred Payroll Protection Plan. There's been other money available through the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program. The unemployment insurance benefits are very generous. The people, many employers report that, gosh, it's hard to get their employees to come back to work because the unemployment benefits are so generous. So a lot has been done to mitigate the damage to the economic sectors in our county and frankly, in our state. So I think it's now time to say, what about the public health of our citizens and our residents? 25% of our population is 60 years or older. If we go to Phase 2, the three major differences is gatherings will be able to be increased from 25 to 100. You'll be able to visit senior care centers, and you'll have relaxed limitations on travel. All three of those are prescription for much... All three of those are prescription for much greater social interaction and much greater sharing, spreading of the virus, which I think is the last thing we want to see and frankly, represents a serious concerns for the seniors in our county.
Yeah, and I, I would first just echo what Commissioner Hall said at the very beginning of her statement that these are incredibly difficult choices to make, you know, and unpopular ones. I would say I have serious reservations at this point and moving on to phase two, mostly because I feel like two outbreaks in two weeks, that is a lot. And especially with this new outbreak we have in a processing facility, we know from other counties and other regions, how bad those types of outbreaks and facilities like that can spread. We are just at the very beginning of investigating that case. We're still waiting for results to come, come back. And I feel like I would like to wait until we feel like we have those results back to where we know if we have help or not from the state and managing that and also, and knowing how big of a situation it is to manage and making sure that we are allowing our contact tracers time to do their jobs and keep, keep the public safe. Additionally, I would imagine by next week that, again, we'll hear back from OHA about our request for help and whether or not they'll help out with that particular situation. I, I just can't right now kind of feel good about telling us to, or recommending that we immediately go into phase two when we have a, an outbreak happening and we still don't have a lot of information coming from that. I would make a suggestion that perhaps we look at reevaluating this or talking about it again. I, I don't think Monday at our regular meeting that there'd be much more information. There might be some results that, that coming over the weekend, but I would suggest maybe another special meeting, perhaps Wednesday as OHA again looks at that from a, a Wednesday through Tuesday situation. So typically, we'd have maybe more data on Tuesday and then hopefully we would have more results back from, from our new outbreak by that time so we would know how many positive cases we're looking at. And hopefully by that time, we would also hear back from OHA on if we're going to be given help to manage that situation. So I would make a suggestion that we simply just move this conversation till mid to late week, next week, when we have more information and also giving our, you know, Lincoln County Public Health time to create more training and move everybody over to paper so that, so that they can keep up and have the tools they need with this. That's, that's my suggestion.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yep, makes sense to me.
Okay, I will then.
I was going to suggest, if you'd like, I was looking at a time, maybe 3 o'clock on Wednesday, the 10th.
I don't have my calendar up right now, so I can't.
I was trying to pull up calendars as we were talking, maybe Kristi's.
Why don't, why don't we say that tentative, 3 PM Wednesday? But of course, we will, we will get a news release out to the public with the exact time. Yeah, so let's, let's tentatively say Wednesday at 3 PM. Okay, and we will get information back, back to the public on the exact date and time once staff can look at calendars. And Rebecca, just a question for you. Would you imagine that by Wednesday, that you would have more results back from testing that was done in the plant?
I would imagine Wednesday would give us plenty of time to have tests back. I'm not really sure what their timeline is because I'm not sure what lab they're using. But we can probably get that information to you Monday when Molly will probably be working with that company, I suspect. So if that would help, I can get that back to you on Monday.
Okay, so let's, let's just plan for a tentative meeting, 3 PM Wednesday to continue the discussion. Wayne, I'm assuming since we didn't necessarily take action, we don't need a motion, we can just kind of continue the meeting off to Wednesday.
That works.
Okay. Any other business from commissioners? Commissioner Hall, anything?
Could I suggest something potentially for an agenda item either, either on our regular meeting Monday or that tentative Wednesday special meeting? Because it doesn't look like we're close to being ready to move to phase two. I know we've had, you know, we've had a record volume of public input on various aspects of COVID, but I know we've had several communications from people in the lodging industry asking us to consider discontinuing the 24 hour hold rule. And if we aren't going to go into phase two soon, whether that's something that would be appropriate to consider. I'll note for the record that the city of Depot Bay already chose to dispense with the 24 hour rule. People in the industry have pointed out, apparently no other jurisdiction has this rule, but of course, again, from public health, you know, is the, you know, I'd be interested, is there good scientific justification for it? And just like to have a little further dialogue on that next week as well, if we could.
I would be agreeable to putting it on the agenda. I don't know, I don't have the Monday agenda in front of me, so I'm not sure how booked that would be. That would be my preference to put it on there, but I guess it depends on, on how full that already is. Commissioner Hunt?
No, I think it's a subject we should address. I think my question, or I have a question for Council Belmont. Each city would have to make its own independent decision to eliminate the 24 hour hold period. If we make the decision, it would only affect those properties in the unincorporated area of the county, is that correct?
Technically, that's correct, except for city in Newport, which adopted a parallel order to ours, so they could amend their order. I, I will tell you this, this, this particular subject has come up. We were intending to actually get together and talk about it with representatives from the cities to see whether there was some, you know, consensus as to what to do with this across the county. And the reason why we didn't do that at this point is that, if you recall, if you move into phase two, that automatically lifts the 24 hour requirement. So we wanted to have this discussion first to see where you were on phase two because that would have resolved the, the question. And it will resolve the question when you go into phase two. And the question now is, do you want to maybe consider it at a different time?
I would suggest, since we did not move forward with an application today at phase two and we're continuing discussion on Wednesday, that perhaps Wayne, if you can move forward with the meeting you were planning, on having to talk to city leadership on this meeting or talk to city managers or something for, for them to discuss, you know, what they think their cities are thinking or hearing about from the public. Why don't you go ahead and move on with that meeting that you were planning? I think that would be helpful. And then we can try to get it on our agenda either this Monday or if we needed to, I guess, on Wednesday at our special meeting.
All right, I'll do that.
Okay, Commissioner Hunt, anything else from you?
No, not at this time.
Okay, Casey or Christie? I do believe we received some public comment for this meeting and I, I think you guys kept a tally, so if you could just kind of read that tally or generalized comments, I think that would be helpful.
I have it at my fingertips.
One second, we're pulling that up.
Okay.
While I'm do, while they're doing that, I would note that the public comments are online. We do keep them in our website. And so if anybody wants to go out and look at those, those are received by the commissioners and shared, so.
So of the public input received, which is all available online for viewing, we had four yeses to move into phase two, nine noes, do not move into phase two, and four who specifically requested to lift the 24 hour restriction for overnight stays on STRs.
Okay, all right, thank you. With that, I will go ahead and adjourn today's meeting. And our next Board of Commissioners meeting is scheduled for Monday at, I'm sorry, what time did it move to? I don't have.
3 o'clock.
Monday at 3 o'clock. All right, we are adjourned, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
I do.
Bye-bye.